Let's, um, the time is seven oh four on Tuesday, July thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Let's call the regular meeting agenda, uh, regular meeting to order for the planning commission. Um, let's all rise and say the pledge.
I pledge the flag of the United States of America, and to your republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Welcome, everybody. Um, it's nice to be back. Uh, do we have any additions to the agenda this evening? No? Okay, hearing none. Um, we're gonna move on to the call for public delegations. Public delegations is a time when members of the public are invited to speak to the commission about certain matters, items, referrals, or applications subject to a decision by the commission. A public hearing or in litigation may not be discussed during deliberations or delegations. Members of the commission will not directly answer questions or make comment. Are there any members of the public wishing to address the planning commission tonight? Okay, so I'm seeing none. I'm gonna move on to, uh, reports, communications. Mr. Gashel, did we get any?
I have no reports yet at this time.
Okay, great. Uh, zoning representative, that was me. Um, they had a really light agenda, and I think they were, it was like a thirty-two-minute meeting or something. Uh, they had one application for, uh, let's see. Oh, there was, no, that's not it. Zoning July, yeah. I'm just going, I'm getting my notes out. So they passed, they passed a text amendment that said if they were in a special hearing, the applicant would have to change their sign postage, posting to reflect, um, continuing or rescheduling of the public hearing. So that passed. And, um, there was some conversation. One of the things that came up was, uh, recreational marijuana cultivation. I think they're gonna add that to the, uh, to their agenda coming up. And that's it. There was one other thing. Yeah, it was, it was a really short meeting, not, not a lot of stuff happened. So that was the zoning, zoning meeting. Uh, ex officio, Mr. Salerno?
Uh, just real quick, it's good to see everyone's faces for once, um, for a year. Um, at our last meeting, we forwarded to the Board of Finance our first round of AARP fund requests, and that, um, there was fifteen K for, to allow for this to be modernized for hybrid Zoom meetings in the future. Possibly do hybrid with people on and, and in, in the meeting room. Um, we allocated six K for Wi-Fi improvements to building. That was one of the things that you could, it's very restrictive what you could use for. Um, we also, we have microwave dishes on our communication towers that, uh, let our fire EMTs all communicate. They do need to be replaced every twenty-five or thirty years. They're due, uh, so we're gonna use that to upgrade those, like get another thirty years of life out of them. Um, we also approved seventy-five K for park and rec requested, uh, to have some counselors and crisis management, um, people. So we, we have some per diem, uh, hiring, uh, for coordinator and counselor for crisis management and stuff like that. A lot of our, a lot of this is taken care of by the schools for our youth during the school year, but not during the summer. Uh, so this is gonna be, we're gonna do a trial program to see how this works to continue to give people support that they need. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Salerno. Um, planning director?
I don't have anything too specific at this time. Um, you know, we still have some pending mediation out there. I'll talk to attorney Mark regarding that. Um, be happy to come attend to executive session, discuss it, to sort of not report at this time until we actually have a hearing.
Uh, did you have any comments about the postponing of the, uh, work up here for the exit reconfiguration and?
I, I don't have much to report on that, other than it's been postponed.
Yeah.
Mainly due to states, uh, they're working on acquiring the remaining land. They have acquired the Starlight Hotel and Mobile Station. So I think it's just their fine-tuning some contracts, my guess, uh, I'm not sure what, why. The other acquisitions are taking longer, uh, but it has to go through a project.
Okay.
So I, uh, I think I reported at the last meeting, um, the group one sixty-one Corvus thing, uh, we did finally get assigned a project number by DOT, so that's gonna get started another way hopefully by, we started a little bit, it's, deals are moving slow. Stay in October, issues start up a lot more.
Thank you, Mr. Gashel. Um, subcommittees, uh, planning conservation and development?
We did, uh, just meet right before this meeting, um, to kind of talk about next steps for implementation. As this group knows, um, I have visited a number of boards and commissions now that we've got the complete document, just reminding them of it and asking them to take a look at the sections that might apply to them, send a representative if they'd like someone here, um, uh, you know, get involved in the process and keep open communication. So, uh, that's been, those conversations have been going really well. Uh, today we determined that we're going to set a working session next month to, uh, create more of an implementation plan out of that recommendations matrix, um, which will include, um, a nice list for the board of selectmen if they'd like to consider, uh, some projects for the recovery money, um, as well as some, um, low-hanging fruit type initiatives that would be good to kind of start and check off for momentum in executing the plan and then prioritizing some, um, some of the key recommendations from each section so that we can get to work on some of that bigger stuff in a coordinated way as well. So, um, thank you to all of those of you who, uh, were part of that discussion, uh, today and over the last two years.
Michelle, when is that meeting?
Uh, we're gonna meet August twenty-fourth. It's gonna be a special meeting, a working session. We'll come out of that with a list to present to the board of selectmen. Um, when we were there, you all had asked us for kind of priorities.
Yes.
So we are prioritizing, you know, kind of some of the key initiatives, knowing that it's all important. We're kind of just identifying some key things. But separately, now that we have a better handle on what the recovery funds can be spent on, we can identify some of the projects supported by the P O C D that would be eligible for that funding to kind of take some of the homework off of you guys.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
That's appreciated. Meetings at seven?
Meetings at seven on August twenty-fourth.
Thank you.
You're gonna send a reminder?
Yeah, we'll get, it, yeah, it's not filed yet or anything. We'll do that this week. And that is my update on P O C D.
Thank you, Michelle. Uh, that comes to chairman's section. Uh, I don't really have a lot to report, um, other than the next liaison to zoning, uh, that I'm showing here is the fifth of August, and that would be for Michelle. Just a reminder, if you can't make it, we'll trade with somebody or make another arrangement.
Thank you.
Um, which comes to the meeting minutes, uh, regular meeting of May eleventh, two thousand twenty-one. Um, is there any corrections or any discussion? Do I hear a motion to approve the meeting minutes of May eleven, two thousand twenty-one?
So.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. Uh, do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Um, any further discussion regarding the meeting minutes? Okay, hearing none. All in favor of approving the meeting minutes, say aye.
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 All opposed? Abstained?
Just me, I was abstaining.
Okay, let the record show six zero one. Uh, Mr. Fitzgerald abstaining?
Five.
Uh, five zero one. Thank you. Um, so public hearings, there's none, subdivisions, re-subdivisions, we have none, no zoning referrals and no municipal referrals. We have one item of old business, and that would be the bylaws. Um, has everyone had a chance to thoroughly read and understand the revised bylaws? Okay. Um, anyone have any corrections or changes or suggestions or?
Yeah, you all got the outline copied. Uh, if there's no further changes, we'll just copy and decode of that. Uh, recommend a motion to approve the bylaws as amended.
Do I hear a motion to?
I'll, I'll do, I'll move to approve the bylaws as amended.
Do I hear a second? Thank you, Michelle.
Second.
Thank you. And, uh, any further discussion? All in favor of approving the amended bylaws? Say aye.
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 All, all opposed? Abstained? Let the record show that the bylaws passed, six zero zero. Uh, new business, we have one item is new business, the affordable housing plan. Um, we are required to update that every five years? Is that what I?
So out of the last legislative session, there's some changes. Um, and I, I gotta just wait till we get to here. So one of those changes is that we are now required, every town is required to provide an affordable housing plan and update that plan every five years. Um, we have, we already have one in place, unfortunately, that doesn't need to be updated by July one, two thousand twenty-two. Um, so like the P O C D, we kind of backed into that number. We're a little bit behind it. Uh, meeting is August, coming up on August, uh, August in my world. Um, so we're about a month, maybe two behind. We're, I would like to be with that because it's gonna take some homework. Um, I have the opportunity of working with a young man in a foreign town as an intern, volunteering his time. Um, so he'll be working with me on that project, basically updating our current inventory and making sure those numbers are correct, letting me roll and renew that. My suggestion would be you may want to consider a subcommittee to tackle the affordable housing plan, or we can just manage that as a whole commission here, at least keep it on the agenda moving forward, rather than see that at a time can be difficult to get members of another meeting. How many of you are already at two or three other meetings? You know, Michelle's going to these commissions and, so that's a, it's a big, big burden there. Um, so however you see that, I'm not going to be happy to work with the commission as a whole. I don't think there's a whole lot that we need to do with this plan, although within it, there are some items like accessory apartments or accessory units in law, whatever you wanted to find those. Um, well, the, part of the new legislation that passed, uh, basically mandated that towns adopt the, that, that provisions that single-family homes would be allowed to create a accessory dwelling unit, um, without special permit. Uh, the town has the choice of opting out of this legislation. That requires a vote by the zoning commission and the board of selectmen. Um, so depending on when, how that goes, uh, that decision will need to be made, I believe, before January one of next year, when this legislation becomes effective. So that's a whole nother fall of wax, but I just think as a planning commission, you should be aware of that housing legislation. Um, I don't necessarily believe that it's gonna be required eight dash twenty-three, or eight dash twenty-four referral from the board of selectmen, um, and nor would it require eight dash three referral from the zoning commission, uh, because there's no change in regulations or the map. Um, I would think that the zoning commission, if, if the town doesn't opt out, they'll have to adopt some standards for accessory units to be permitted as a right. Um, but obviously with some regulatory standards there for parking, off-street parking, things like that, we have to consider. Um, there's massive potential impacts to traffic, density, education, and, so, uh, certainly, you know, however we can help the zoning commission handle it or make this decision, I'm more than happy to help with providing whatever information we can. Um, that, that's a big one. Um, I think at the time, we're basically moving forward. Um, in addition to that, the legislation also included that commission members for both weapons, zoning and planning, all have to receive two years of continuing education, totaling four hours. Mandatory education for these officials. Um, the Office of Policy and Management is working on the criteria for that. As soon as they develop it and get it down to municipalities, I will get it to you and go from there.
Okay.
One more.
Fantastic. Members of the commission or staff?
Members of the commission.
Have to have four hours?
Per year. I, I think it's per year or, or four hours per year, uh, in two years or something like that, or?
I thought it was two.
Or two hours?
Each year?
Two hour, I, I, call that as four. We can look it up exactly. I can get you the number of the specific.
This is training that'd be done in house, or this is training that's gotta be done with like CCM or?
Uh, I believe it'll be through CCM and UConn Clear, um, as well as, uh, Nemo, which is also a non-point education for municipal officials. It's just another kind of extension of UConn Clear, which is the Center for Many Use Education Research. But that's all, OPM is working with those organizations on developing this educational criteria. So, kind of interesting.
Is that additional cost to your budget?
I don't know. I, it potentially could be, depending on what the state comes down with. If the UConn says, hey, we're gonna charge these seminars and courses, then absolutely. I mean, we, we do have the line item in there currently for conventions and workshops that members can go, but we certainly never budget like the whole commission can go. You know, for, you know, a member here and there going to two or three of these things along with myself, going to two or three maybe during, throughout the course of the year. So that's maybe six to eight workshops in a year that we could, we could possibly fund. Can only put, I think, five to six hundred dollars into that line item. So anywhere from forty to sixty dollars a seminar. Now granted, we went, with COVID, everything seemed to be free and it was all virtual. So all the workshops and things that I was doing in the town, I didn't have to pay for in the past year with this benefit, but then I don't, I doubt that I would take.
It looks like it doesn't start until two thousand twenty-three, though.
It's just curious how that, like, elected members and appointed members, what are the repercussions if they don't go?
Well, that's, the legislation didn't specify what happens if you didn't, if you didn't get educated. It just says you shall do this, so it's a shall, but didn't say what the penalty was if you didn't get the training.
That's great, like penalty to the town, but like, remember, like?
I, I would think, and, I just, I, we've seen the state go back on, uh, saying, hey, you know, before we had the P O C D, it had to be updated every ten years, and if you didn't, well, uh, no big deal. They, they passed legislation to say, hey, if you didn't update your P O C D, you'll be?
You'll be more involved with grants.
Grants. So I would think, I mean, they figure out that, hey, there's no penalty here, you're gonna develop one, or maybe you, you throw the grant thing out there and things like that. Remembered our, you know, they'll come up with some idea. I, I don't know, but I'm, because why require training if there's no penalty or any precaution for nothing?
That is just interesting.
So, so we'll get, we'll get some clarification and circle back to that?
Yeah, that, obviously, in, maybe a few months, I think, before we get everything kind of squared away.
Okay.
Maybe at that time, well, we, they can coincide that with, uh, town attorney's executive session on updating us on the legal matters, but then we've got a lot of these members that's in.
Okay.
And you can go explain some of this stuff if needed, if not, we'll.
So circling back to the affordable housing plan?
Yes. So that said, how you want it to proceed forward is up to you. Uh, the plan, I noticed it was not online. Uh, so I asked him to add it, and I, I thought it was an appendage to the, like, call, correct? Um, I didn't see there listed appendices. So I've asked her to put that online so that all of you can access it. Um, I do have a copy with me tonight if you want to look at it, but short of that, my suggestion, take a read through. I would just note, it's old, it's outdated, the numbers are old, um, and the income when I was written was, I think, seventy thousand. So we now exceeded that. Um, so yeah, we're.
So there's some work there, definitely.
So there's some work there. I, I, hopefully the intern that I'm working with will be tasking him updating this number. Um, but I think maybe the content of which, we alluded to these accessory units as a recommendation, um, if they were de-restricted, affordable. I don't know if that's something I'm gonna kind of try to figure out as it coincides with this new legislation.
So, so we need to know, we need some clarification on the legislation and what the requirements, like they have some written requirements for what consists or what, what items are required to be included in, in that legislation or?
Um, I, I didn't really see, they had a few things, some, some criteria that you could follow. Um, I can review our document against that. I'll, maybe the best thing to do is just copy that section of the legislation if we go to.
Yeah, that would be good. Yep. How long do you have your assistant intern?
Um, he, he's currently unemployed, uh, working on his real estate license, a young man, not sure where.
So this is, this is a good opportunity. Yeah, it's a good opportunity for him to find out the real good things that go into housing, affordable housing plan. So that would be good, good to?
Yeah. Um, so why don't I even know that out, take a read at it, and then maybe at the next meeting, um, you can kind of brainstorm what needs to be updated. And maybe between now and then, I can get all the, the numbers updated. That'll help us and maybe, you know, we can start work load as far as what needs to be updated. I think the only question I have is, it really depends on where the town ends up, up with this new legislation, if we opt out. Well, we don't necessarily want to be recommending accessory units if we're opting out of something, and kind of have to take a look at that. Uh, again, I think the recommendation at that time was to make the accessory not only de-restricted, but special permit use for zoning, which never obviously happened. So I'm not sure whether those towns have that provision. Um, there's several do. I don't know what they're, how that, I guess if, they can no longer require special permit for those uses, and they had to make them by right, and so I'm maybe go opt out because they end up with this influx of units. I, I don't know. I'm just thinking, by not opting out, I don't know how you can control the growth and any reason for make another level of economy to take that, you know, housing.
So if we don't opt out, then it becomes by right or by special, by, we have to do it after, the zoning regulations are allowed by special permit, because we don't even allow.
You wouldn't be able to adopt the regulation to allow by special permit, because you have to be a by right use, like this legislation's written.
By right use. So would override all zoning?
Pretty much. You could adopt criteria for it, permitted use by right, provided that, you meet X, Y, and Z criteria. Bill would, or the zoning commission would, would do that as a site plan rule maybe, um, if that sound this stuff is written.
So this is not just in-law apartments, this is like, like rental, it could be a hot, you could have a rental, you could rent out half your house.
Sure.
You could, uh, correct.
I could take the house and make it two formal dwelling units. Obviously, if you're on a septic, you're gonna have to meet the health code requirements for the additional bedrooms. Um, you know, so there are some constraints that, which will help mitigate. Uh, but for those units, think of our water sewer district, all the sewered homes that only were single-family, now, but their home and half, so it's, it's, you know, impact on the sewer system, the traffic.
Parking.
The population.
Schools.
The, the school district, a host of issues, uh, that come with that.
That's surprising.
But to be clear, I mean, we do recommend them currently, and it, as a regulation change, we have got, we have recommended a recommendation change, a regulation change to allow them as affordable units. This legislation would allow them at market rate?
Yes. And, and I would just note, while we recommend them as affordable units, also permitted by special permit.
Got it.
Where now we have no discretion, really, you know, other than whatever criteria we would adopt on the zoning.
Who's recommending that we?
It's been in the last two P O CDs.
When this?
Because it's definitely not, it's a, it's a.
It's not in the zoning, it's just not gonna die.
So you're saying you've got one acre lot and you could kind of subdivide it?
No, no. Well, the recommendation that I think we had is that at least, yep, the, I think the intent was that the accessory unit would be attached to the home, be part of the existing home, taking the addition, renovation, interior, um, that, that unit be de-restricted, affordable.
For, for a rental, then?
Rental.
Because how would you sell it if you have?
Yeah, you couldn't sell it. It would be a rental.
Okay, it has to be a rental.
If you sold it, you'd have to form a, a, an association, a condo association, so that can sell it like a condo. I don't want to get into two-family homes. I, I, that's, that's more of a civil matter, I think, for the landowner, is whether or not he's gonna have a two-family home or sell part of it. I, you know, that's.
Complicated.
Very complicated.
I understand all apartments, please. Okay.
Hey, I'd be happy to send you all that.
Yeah, so this is, uh, complicated and it could, the impacts of this are pretty, could, could, could be pretty big for the town.
I think so.
So this is definitely something that we're gonna want to take some time and think through and understand pretty well. Um, so does, excuse me, does a decision from the board of selectmen have to be made first before you move far along on the planning part, or, I'm just understanding timing?
No, I think we can start with our planning efforts, right?
Yeah.
And I think as we go forward, if it's, you know, I go, we have this red, current recommendations to say we should de-restrict these things, affordable, with this out, you know, I think we can just kind of wait on that, wait to see how the town responds and then, maybe, or maybe do the process working with the board, right?
Right.
Gather information.
To help inform the decision.
To help inform the decision. Okay, it would be great if we had, you know, an updated plan. But, uh, yeah, I think that's, I think the best approach is that we dissolve the affordable housing plan and we help inform the decision really.
Is that something you guys would want to include sounding on?
Yes.
Since they're in the house, affordable housing regulations.
The one thing I am working on, um, I'm gonna talk to Mark over tomorrow. Uh, first thing, there is some money available, the Max Awards, fifteen thousand dollars to help develop this plan. I'm gonna talk to Mark and see how he feels about that. Uh, if we're gonna go pursue this grant opportunity, um, then we'll have to get, I'll have to get in front of the board selection per day about, as Mark is signing, applying for a grant. But short of that, that may be helpful, and then if we make a deal on a small firm, uh, develop this, we can do all the time as well.
I would think professional, for, some kind of professional input on something like this would be a, a good thing, a good investment from the town. So I think anytime we have an opportunity to get a grant for something like that, I think we should definitely pursue it. That's just my opinion.
No, I agree. The grant window is open until September.
What's my strategy, consult, uh, municipal?
Do you foresee major changes to existing planning? I mean, it was only written five years ago.
Not significant. I mean, I think it, most of it holds, allows the, the numbers that are reading in today, um, and then the accessory unit. And so I really think it's probably, you could probably handle in the house. It may be good to, uh, pursue some expertise in housing. I, I still scratch my head, some of the things that go on, but I, I still scratch my head, some of the things that go on, but then trying to understand the pulse of the real estate market. But maybe we can lean on some of our current, you know, members like Norm who's in the real estate industry and other realtors that we know, to help involve this decision as well. I mean, they're gonna know the real pulse of the market. Yes, Bill and I see the commercial development and real estate, you know, but it's, it's, there's a lag between the things, land, land settles and buildings are built.
Yeah.
And, you know, the, the, looking, what I do know is the Council of Government says the last five years, I'd say five or more years, that, if, you know, advocated that there is a housing shortage in Southeastern Connecticut, particularly because of the, the high rate of MIB. And it's, you know, just going to continue. So, if that's going to continue, you know, how does that affect the slide? And it just means more homes. And I think it's important just to manage that growth over time so that, you know, it grows steadily, that we can handle it. We have to be able to be sustainable, we have to be able to provide the sewer services. Uh, maybe that requires expansion of the sewer services to better protect the environment. I don't know. You know, so things like that, you have to consider, you know, the availability of water for those new homes, capacity issues, what you're gonna be concerns, uh, already are concerns to have a better air blast. So, I, I think we're just looking at all the same issues just under bigger magnified laws.
I would be a strong proponent of outside help if we can apply for that grant.
Yeah.
And it's not, it's not about our, you know, talent level internally, but it, I mean, we are, we have openly discussed that we are not meeting the current legal requirements here and that we have some work to do in town on affordable housing and I think, you know, some of the affordable housing proposals that have come through just by nature of where the available land is now to develop have been problematic. So it would be great to have some outside creative thinking on how we can increase our affordable housing stock in a way that's, you know, beneficial for it to slide, yeah, smart.
Do they, do you feel that the COG would have the bandwidth and expertise to do, to, to help with this specific with, with our town or, I mean, do they do affordable housing work or?
I'm not certain. I know they have a number of traffic, uh, planners who specialize in traffic management. Um, in my conversations with Mr. Butler regarding extra help in, uh, increased, uh, quote, in the rental permits, um, they are kind of short-staffed based on the numbers and the knowledge we discussed, um, and what it costs, it's basically, you know, taking all the time of his employee and, and at the end of the day, you're basically in a full-time position just for that and to make it worth their while to provide that service. So, uh, you know, we did discuss doing a part option, so that's kind of, we were headed with that, but I, I think they maybe need it so. They might be going to, uh, private firm. And it, I mean, there's a number of those to connect. Um, I guess to find a solo planner who specializes in housing. Kind of for $15,000, it's a huge chunk of that.
Does anyone else have any other thoughts or ideas about affordable housing and, uh, how, how to proceed other than pursuing a grant and understanding what the criteria for this, this, uh, rewrite is and the new regulations? Any other thoughts? Okay, so there's a big item of new business for next time. I don't know that I, I don't know that we're really ready to form a subcommittee just yet, just because there's a lot of things that we don't know and, um.
The item on the agenda has to progress when we need a subcommittee.
I agree. Uh, so that brings us to adjournment. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Uh, I heard a second, third, and a fourth.
A lot of some.
I don't know. Somebody, whoever it was. Mr. Fitzgerald, okay, thank you. Any further discussion? None? All in favor of adjourned, say aye.
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 Opposed, abstained, uh, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.